The time is now 7:09 and I'm going to reconvene the January 22, 2018 Regular Board Meeting. Jackie, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Rising?
Here.
Ms. Demming?
Here.
Mr. Resack?
Here.
Ms. Price?
Here.
Mr. Krubus?
Here.
Ms. Peel?
Here.
Ms. Donahue, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We now go to our Board Salutes. We have two. I'm going to ask Ms. Demming to start.
Three District 204 students received MLK Character Award. The Board Salutes Mathieu Valley's Eddie Gene Davis III, Niqua Valley's Demetrius Wallace, and Wobonzie Valley's Derek Lee, who each received the MLK Character Award at the Agape Connections 17th Annual Martin Luther King Celebration. The award is given to young men who have impressed the principal of their school with high moral character, volunteerism, leadership, and show visionary potential. Congratulations to these three students.
And Ms. Donahue?
The Board Salutes Niqua Valley Senior Tricia Prabhu, who was one of nine seniors selected for the DuPage County Leadership Team by the Daily Herald. The leadership team is comprised of high school students who empower themselves to make change in the world through volunteerism and encouraging volunteer efforts and others. Tricia researched, invented, and developed technology to detect and stop cyberbullying proactively and rolled it out as a free smartphone app. Congratulations, Tricia.
Thank you. Now, it's time for our Student Representative Report. Today, it's from Wobonzie Valley High School, and Lauren Akon.
Go Warriors!
Hey Lauren.
Good evening and Happy New Year. Wobonzie is starting off the new calendar year in exciting fashion by announcing their upcoming spring musical, The Little Mermaid. Along with this production, Wobonzie Valley will also be hosting their winter main stage titled, "A Bad Year for Tomatoes," on February 1st, 2nd, and 3rd. On the 3rd, this small stage performance is set to be a matinee at 2:00 PM. Wobonzie has a few staff celebrations with Mr. Wolak, our government teacher, being recognized as a Northwestern Distinguished Teacher Award finalist, and Steve Penley, a business teacher, as the Junior Achievement Superhero of the Year recipient. For some of the more recent events and accomplishments seen around the halls of Wobonzie, our music department is sending another strong showing of 22 performers to the ILMEA this weekend. Our speech team wrapped up their annual speech tournament here at Wobonzie Valley entitled, "The Real Thing." 16 teams competed out of determinate we're proud of. Always a proud favorite, our show choir started their competition season this past weekend at Mount Zion. That was their first performance for the competition season. This past weekend, Wobonzie Valley Special Olympics Basketball won a bronze medal at their tournament in Cicero. The Technology Center of DuPage recently named 15 Wobonzie students as A-Team Students, rewarding their academic and program achievements in the past semester. Wobonzie Valley Robotics Team has recently won two awards: the Innovation Award at Niqua Valley's VEX Robotics and Excellence Award at the Evanston VEX Tournament. The team has advanced to compete in the state tournament. Wobonzie Valley Baseball is holding its Father-Son Camp February 4th, a camp focused on learning baseball skills. BPA recently competed in all area and qualified 65 students for the State Leadership Conference. Wobonzie recently administered the Five Essential Survey throughout the school. The survey is intended to gather student feedback on the school. On January 17th, we welcomed our incoming graduating class of 2023 as we hosted our 8th grade open house. This event kicked off our process of course selection, choosing classes for the 2018 to 2019 school year. Additionally, starting February 7th, Wobonzie Student Council is running the school-wide paper drive. Paper from this drive goes to elderly citizens in need in the local community. BTA is also hosting its annual Silent Auction and March with the always fun theme of March Madness. And to close out, Wobonzie's spring sorts are starting up the following month, including water polo, soccer, and the first-ever IHSA lacrosse season for District 204.
Thank you.
Thanks Lauren.
It is now time for public comment for non-agenda items. If you are here to speak to an agenda item, that comment will be taken immediately prior to that item. 30 minutes is allowed for public comment and each person is limited to three minutes. When addressing the Board, we ask that you respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and school district personnel. We also ask that those addressing the Board be cognizant that this is an open meeting and is available to all age groups, and as such, ask that you consider who the audience members are this evening and keep comments age-appropriate. Public comment represents the voice and opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from Board members during the meeting, but follow-up will be provided by an administrator as appropriate. First speaker today is Melissa Cleary.
Thank you for allowing me to voice my concerns. I am a taxpayer, parent, and a longtime community member. District 204 Board Members, I appreciate the time that you give to ensure our administrators are providing an appropriate education for my three children. However, I am questioning the voices, the choices I made as a voter. Parents, students, taxpayers, siblings, self-advocates, professionals, and many more have all spoken to you expressing their grave concern for special education students, in particular, our young adults in transition. How can it be that you have not moved forward on a comprehensive, innovative transition program? How is it possible that you are not hearing us? How could you believe the people that have spoken to you for months are not representing all special education students? Students with disabilities make up 11% of this district's population. That's nearly the size of Niqua Valley High School. I'm sure you wonder why more parents haven't come forward to speak to you or to attend the Engage 204 meetings? Special needs families deal with far more than we're aware of. A lot more than most of us can handle. It's overwhelming. Is it fair to expect special education guardians and parents to find the time to advocate for services and resources that should be provided to their children under federal law? When will our district recognize the tremendous value in providing an appropriate transition program? There isn't a day that passes that most of us have an interaction in our community with someone that has special needs. If you look at transition programs in surrounding districts such as Naperville 203 or Lyons Township, they provide special needs students access to a creative and innovative transition opportunity. Those students, in turn, continue to live, work, and give back to those communities. I'm pretty sure my two other children without a disability will be given an outstanding education in this district. Then they'll go away to college, and then they're going to move out of Naperville. My special needs son, he'll stay here. He'll work here, numerous jobs probably. He'll spend his money here. He'll volunteer here. He will represent an outstanding Naperville citizen. President Resack, I am asking you to lead our elected members in following the Board's mission of establishing educational policies, setting goals and objectives for the district, and hold the administratives accountable for meeting these goals and objectives. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is... Next speaker is Deb Gornowski.
Hi, my name is Deb Gornowski and my son Ryan is a second-year student at STEPS. I want to share with you a personal challenge with STEPS program and why I believe it's important to have the program in one location. When the STEPS program was divided last year into three different locations, my husband and I ran into several quandaries. We discovered that not only were the students being separated by ability, but also the availability of classes was determined by location. Our son Ryan falls into the tweener category. He needs programming from both Niqua and Wobonzie locations. After having a productive meeting over the summer with Jen Bros and Libby Jansen, we decided the best fit for Ryan would be at Niqua. However, we had to change one of his IEP goals to reflect what was programmatically available at Niqua. Ryan's IEP goals should not have been based on what classes are available at the STEPS location he best fits into. He should have access to all STEPS classes that help him obtain his goals. One location would solve this issue and eliminate the painstaking decisions of which program to choose and minimizing his full learning potential. I'm currently in my 10th consecutive year at Niqua. The district has always prided themselves in preparing our high school students for college. When my daughter entered college, she actually told me that she didn't realize how well Niqua prepared her and that the transition to college was easier than expected. She continued on to get her master's, CPA, and works at one of the top accounting agencies in Chicago. My younger son, who is a student at Niqua, is currently experiencing the same educational benefits as his sister. Thank you for preparing two of my kids for life after high school. Now it's Ryan's turn. My questions to you are, when are you going to take pride in preparing one of the most vulnerable populations you have in the district? You have the power and the choice to be a leader in this transition community. We have amazing teachers and staff with Jen Bros and Libby Jansen, who need a conducive environment to give each student the opportunity to be the best community member that they can be. When are you going to ask yourself the question, what percentage of STEPS students have a job when they age out of the program at 22? What are the plans for STEPS next year? And when will we be informed? Whether people choose to voice it or not, we all know having the program at three locations is not working. Other transitional programs in the area are located in their own building and include but are not limited to Wheaton 200, Batavia 101, St. Charles, Geneva Mid Valley Special Education, Naperville 203, Elmhurst 205, Barrington 220, Lyons Township, Downers Grove, DuPage 88, Hinsdale 86, Aspire Program Private, Turning Point Private, Acacia Academy Private, and La Grange. I see innovative programs, real job training, corporate sponsors, micro businesses where students run coffee shops, bakeries, and gardens. They have partnerships with community colleges and mentors. I sent an email to you several weeks ago explaining my personal story and information on the other transitional programs. I did not receive a response, so hopefully you're hearing this for the second time. My son Ryan deserves the same support and opportunities his siblings have received from this district. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Penny Boyle.
My name is Penny Boyle, and my daughter Sophie has a year and a half left at STEPS. And I would like to know what the plans are for the next year and a half for Sophie and for the new incoming students at STEPS. It feels like the decision to split the STEPS program into the three high schools was a very quick decision, and it's now been seven months, and personally, I have no clue what's going on. And I don't even know what the school board, how they feel about our STEPS program, and what their vision is for STEPS. We all know that STEPS is not as sexy as STEM and football and lacrosse, but the special needs community is also a very small part of the school district. But for most of our kids, it's the only chance for them to go to college and have the college experience where they can create lasting friendships, just like the neurotypical students. When our kids were at Wheatland, they were, for the first time, 100% the center of attention. At Wheatland, they were the norm and not the exception. And by putting them back in high school and separating them, we're taking that away from them. Our special needs students and teachers need the STEPS programs to be in one location away from the high schools. And parents, teachers, and students need to be informed of what you're planning. So please step up and make STEPS great again. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Debbie Karas.
Hello, Board. My name is Debbie Karas, and I am here today to advocate for my 8th grade daughter Clarissa. She would be here today, but she's home doing her studies. I am here today to ask that District 40 School District make a border exception, which I know that you have the power to do, and allow my A-student daughter to attend Wobonzie Valley High School. When we built our home a while ago back in hometown, the big selling point was that we were going to be in School District 204. Come to find out that we were just over the border, and now we are in District 131. Clarissa has gone to Calvary Christian School since 1st grade, and she has excelled in the school. Every student succeeds act, says that children should be in an environment that allows them to excel. I brought you today letters of recommendation from Clarissa's principal at the school, as well as many teachers, asking for you to make an exception to let her attend Wobonzie Valley High School. I also have brought some copies of her grades, most of them are straight A's, over the years, and her Terra Nova test results. She also received a Board of Education honor signed by the president. Clarissa loves math and is now taking freshman algebra in 8th grade in school. Clarissa participates in volleyball, basketball, and choir and still maintains her high grades. Wobonzie Valley High School would be a good environment for her to thrive for college. East Aurora High School is where she is supposed to attend. This school has a C rating by the state of Illinois, and it is rated 3 out of 10 for readiness for college. The student body is very diverse. The majority of it is Hispanic, and the least amount is white. I ask that you please consider making a border exception and allow Clarissa to attend Wobonzie Valley High School. Thank you for your time and your consideration in listening to my request.
Our next speaker is Ginger Selby Chase.
Hi, my name is Ginger Selby Chase, and first of all, I'd like to thank all of you for serving on the Board. I know it's not an easy job, and I appreciate you doing it. And I want to thank you for allowing me to speak today about STEPS, STEPS Transition Program. My daughter is a senior at Niqua Valley, and she will transition into STEPS next year. However, she is already telling me she doesn't want to go to STEPS because it's in the freshman building of her high school. While her typical peers are excitedly discussing their plans for the future, college, and jobs, she feels embarrassed and demeaned because she's going back into the freshman building. Her peers are moving on, but in her words, she's moving backwards into a small, cramped, inadequate, and counterproductive program. What was once considered a pioneering transition program, 204, now is grossly falling behind other districts in our state. I moved to Naperville when my daughter was nine months old for the Niqua Valley Transition Program. Now, almost 18 years later, I'm getting ready to put her in that program, and it is completely falling apart, and she's refusing to attend it. Unfortunately, 204 has dropped the ball, lost its vision, and is because of that, the parents of the transition students are frantically trying to figure out how to provide an adequate next step program. We need a location under one roof, not now, not later, but now, that will provide continued growth in academics and vocational training in a dignified setting. We need certified teacher-led classes, a partnership with the community colleges, and a way for our transition students to work and to possibly even live together to expand their independence, social and community integration into Naperville, so they can make the most of their final years of their public education. Not a second can be wasted of this important time in their lives. I look forward to continuing this discussion, and I'll continue to discuss it for as long as it takes to make a change. Okay, thank you.
Last speaker is Sally Glavine.
I usually confine my remarks to large class sizes, but there's a few other areas that are equally troubling and need this Board's attention. The first area is the STEPS program. I'm not going to highlight all of the things that are so wrong with this program as it is currently being implemented, but one of the things that really bothers me is that STEPS students, after being split between the three high schools, have been told not to communicate with current high school students or staff. As a parent, I find that shameful. What message do you think this sends to the STEPS students? Honestly, if I had a young adult in this program, I would suggest to them that every chance they get, they should say hello, have a nice day, or some other pleasantry to every person they pass. If that offends someone, tough. Hopefully, such a ridiculous directive is being ignored, but the fact that it was communicated at all to parents and students is awful. While I know the Board is not involved in day-to-day tasks, please instruct administration that this one needs to end today. Secondly, the STEPS community cannot wait until all of the Engage 204 sessions have been held and all the community's desires tabulated. That's not even going to happen until July, which means whatever the community wants won't even be acted upon until maybe the 2019-20 school year at the earliest. Planning for 2018-19 is going on now. This program cannot sustain another waste of a year that this year has spent for these students and families. The dedicated staff cannot be expected to work miracles for another year while being short-changed at every turn involving their students. Stepparents have approached the district about reviewing a non-district building as a possible STEPS location. This location may be available at cost, or it may not work at all. Instead of working with the STEPS families, the district is not even interested at looking at this property. Why is that? Because our given current fiscal constraints and the fact that there's capacity within our current facilities, the administration does not think looking at outside facilities is prudent, really? It's not prudent just to look at an outside facility? Then please explain to the taxpayers why it is prudent to continue to subsidize the STEM school at Aurora University. That is an outside facility that we contributed $103,000 to in 2016 for building operations and $78,000 in transportation costs for 50 students to and from their homes in Aurora University. How does this fit within our current fiscal constraints? After all, we have capacity in our current facilities for these students, and transportation would be much less. So why are we using our limited resources to subsidize this offsite facility? Until we are flush with cash, the STEM school should end. The STEM school is luxury, not a necessity, and you can't justify supporting this allegedly state-of-the-art program when so many basic needs of so many others are not being met. Thirdly, a clarification of Engage 204 and parent and community involvement is sorely needed from this Board. Parents in the community are under the impression that the Board is interested in what the community has to say and will act according to the community's priorities. At the moment, it appears that this will only be true when parents in the community agree with whatever the Board and administration have predetermined. And this is evident in the treatment of the STEPS program. This was evident in the prior vote on school boundaries, and this is also evident in continued large class sizes, which I got in. Please act on these areas now. Don't wait. Thank you.
Thank you. Now moving to the Consent Agenda and Superintendent Report portion of our meeting, and I'm going to ask Dr. Sullivan to begin.
Okay, you heard Lauren mention the Five Essential Surveys that our students are taking. So this is my final plea for our parents to complete the Illinois Five Essential Schools Survey. This survey is only open until January 31st. As a district, we value a hearing from our parents about their child's school, and we use that information in the survey to guide our school improvement efforts. We only get results if we get 20% of our families to respond, so I'm urging all of our parents to take the time to complete the survey and give us feedback. And again, a reminder that our third Engage 204 session will be held on Monday, January 29th. It's still middle school from 7 to 9. This meeting will focus on the community's expectations for the kind of education they want their students to receive. Again, we encourage everyone to come out and participate in these very important meetings and visit the Engage 204 website for more information. I don't have a whole lot tonight, but we do have a special presentation. So I'd like to introduce Dan Kraus. There he is, over in the corner. Dan is here representing the Illinois Principals Association, and he is going to recognize one of our very own principals for a very special award. And I'll leave it to you, Dan.
Thank you, Dr. Sullivan and the Board. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present a very distinguished honor to one of our own. As the current principal of Willbrook High School, myself, and also serving on the Board of Directors for the Illinois Principal Association, I think it's just a little bit of a perspective for a recognition such as this for Mr. Stip. There are more than 27,000 high schools in the United States. There are more than 1,000 in the state of Illinois. The Illinois Principal Association is made up of 21 different regions. Each region has the opportunity to recognize one high school principal. So out of all the high school principals within the state of Illinois, Mr. Jason Stip is the recognized High School Principal of the Year for the DuPage Region right here in your hometown, and I'd like to congratulate him on behalf of the DuPage Region of the Illinois Principal Association. I know firsthand the incredible work that Jason does. I know you do as well. I work very closely with him on a variety of different topics and someone that I personally call when we have different situations, and we like to share resources with one another. He's a great friend and a great member of the Illinois Principal Association with more than 5,000 members, and he is certainly a great example of that. From here, he is in the consideration for the state principal of the year, the high school level, and that'll be announced a little bit later in the spring. But once again, Jason, congratulations. Well deserved.
I do want to acknowledge a few things. First, I want to acknowledge Dan and my colleagues for this recognition. Thank you. It means a lot coming from you, knowing that you're sacrificing another night tonight, and you sacrifice a lot of time as it is. So for you to be here and for you to acknowledge the work that I do with the work that all of my colleagues do, it means a lot to me. I want to thank the Board of Education, and I want to thank the Cabinet here as well. Six years ago, you took a chance on me. Karen, you were in that interview, and Jay, and several other people, and so I appreciate that. It's always been a desire for me to serve the community that I live in, and it's a dream come true, so thank you for that. I want to thank my colleagues. Jason Schmickel is here tonight, and Dr. Lee, another one of my colleagues that I work closely with, and my team, the faculty and staff at Wobonzie Valley High School. I would not be here without them. I was walking in this morning thinking, you know, couldn't beat the swimmers in, of course, but I was coming in this morning just how grateful I am to be a part of that school and that culture, and I always tell the kids, "I don't shine if you don't shine." And it's a pleasure working there, working for them and representing them. And lastly, I dragged my family to another event here tonight because I've dragged them all over the place for the last several years on this journey. And, you know, my oldest always asks, "Do you have to go back to work tonight?" And, you know, so they feel that, but they support me, and I greatly appreciate it, and especially my wife, who allows me to play in this job every day. And I'm a big fan of hers, and she's the biggest fan of me, so thank you. Thank you to all of you. I wanted them to be here to receive this honor with me as well. So thank you. Go Warriors, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
That's my report.
Nicely done. Okay, we now move to our Consent Agenda. I need a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items D through I.
I'd like to pull Consent Agenda...
I'd like to pull Consent Agenda Item D.
Okay.
I also would like to have Item G considered separately.
Okay.
Okay, I will take care of that. Be patient, just for a moment.
Can I make a motion with those two?
Give us... Yeah, I move that we approve Consent Agenda Items E, F, H, and I.
Second.
So we have a motion to approve Agenda Items E, F, H, and I, and we have a second. Jackie, can you call the roll?
Probably not. Okay, I apologize. Who made the motion?
I did. Justin.
Justin, okay. The second, thank you. And I can call the roll. Mr. Carrubus?
Yes.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Ms. Demme?
Aye.
Mr. Raesak?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Okay. Now, I do need you to hold on to the next thing, because I have got to move these, or else it won't work. Sorry.
Okay, give me the sign.
Okay. Okay, no problem. You might want to rethink that.
A nice sign.
Sorry, it's a process.
We need weight music.
Yeah, we do.
Sorry, I was just thinking that.
Hi, Tom, but people usually ask me not to. Okay, so now I have consentists done, and the separate consideration is ready.
Okay, can we start with the minutes first? And then, is that okay?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, that I can do fast.
So I still think I need a motion, right?
Yeah, I'm assuming... You want me to make the motion for you?
Sure.
Yeah, okay. I'll make a motion for the approval of Consent Agenda Items, Item G, as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote.
Should we clarify, you're just not voting on it because you weren't here?
Yes, I wasn't here. Yes, right.
Might as well clarify that.
Ms. Donahue?
Stay.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Carrubus?
Yes.
Ms. Demme?
Aye.
Mr. Raesak?
Aye.
Now, I need a motion for Item Number D, please.
I move that the Board of Education approve Board Policies 4:15, Identity Protection, 5:200 Terms and Conditions of Employment and Dismissal, 5:240 Suspension, 5:290 Employment Termination and Suspensions, 7:20 Harassments of Students Prohibited, 7:190 Student Behavior, and 7:305 Student-Athlete Concussions and Head Injuries, as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Mr. Carrubus?
Yeah, so I don't support Board Policy 5:200 and 5:290 for the sole purpose that it makes reference to an agreement with the association in a number of places. So you have policy that references a 100-page document. It's not instructive, doesn't provide good clarity. This is peppered throughout our policy, and I think it can be handled a lot cleaner. We could have a simple policy that says if we have an agreement, that trumps any of our policies, instead of sprinkling it around. So all board policies are subject to a collective bargaining agreement. That is what Board Policy 6:20 references in Number Two. That is what our collective bargaining agreement says. If you look at our board policy in other places and our collective bargaining agreement, it doesn't look like we have fully cleaned him up since we moved to press. For example, if you look at Board Policy 5:70, which talks about religious leave, it says we will pay not to exceed two days per school year. The collective bargaining agreement says religious leave with pay not to exceed two days per school year will be granted in accordance with Board Policy 5:70. And Board Policy 570 says, please refer to the collective bargaining agreement. So you get this circular thing going on that doesn't really provide a lot of instruction. So I think I have no problem with the support. I support the changes to the policies. I support the updates to the policies. But this is a vote for the policies, and it's not a vote just for the changes. So I am looking to separate out 5:200 and 5:290 so that I can vote in the negative.
Other discussion or questions?
Well, is your point to then have them look at this, or have the board look at these policies and make the changes you're suggesting?
Well, that's not on the agenda tonight.
But is that what you're...
My goal is to change policy so that it reflects, so that you remove the sprinkling of references to the collective bargaining agreement, this 100-page document.
Okay. And...
Can I...
Yes.
Can I talk, because I've talked to IASB about this twice now, and talked to our policy person. So he says, he's told us to be very cautious about doing that, that we need to be very careful, that you, if you're going to essentially put the collective bargaining agreement into your policy, that you need to be very careful that you capture all the appropriate sections of the policy, that it would need to be immediately updated, because these particular policies are all subject to collective bargaining. That's why those are there. So ISBE feels best practice is to refer to the collective bargaining agreement, which is what we have done, and they say that to avoid any legal hurdles and any other potential kind of pitfalls. So if the board does choose to include collective bargaining language within our policies, I would need that direction. We would have to talk to our attorney about doing that and having that done across several other policies. He did, Brian Zumpf, who worked with the board when we redid all of the policy manuals a number of years ago, did say that the Office of General Counsel would be happy to speak to any board members who want to talk about this, but their recommendation is that we do as we have done in here, and that's to refer to the collective bargaining agreements.
So to Justin's question or point about, in the contract, it says to refer to Policy 5:700, I believe?
Seventy, yep.
Seventy. Maybe in that agreement, maybe there is some reference to, you know, to clean that up a little bit. Maybe we clean up in that document rather than the policy to have some consistency there, and we don't get that circular...
Yeah, that's an obvious one, I think, can be cleaned up all around. So I agree on that. I mean, but my point is not to bring in the contract to policy.
Right.
It's to remove the 20 references in policy to the contract. You know, we could just have a provision that says, "This is our policy, and if we have a contract, that trumps our policy." And if you look at, look at 5:290, that's up for tonight, what's our policy on final paychecks? Look at the agreement. Now, that seems like a weird policy to have when we could just have, you know, it's almost no policy. Look at this 100-page document on your final paycheck.
That contract, if there's language in the contract about a final paycheck, that could change from contract to contract.
Sure.
And so this, the policy says to refer to, you know, I would say the most current, I would add language to this to say, "The most current agreement between Indian Prairie, blah, blah, blah," so that there's no ambiguity there. But I think we have, I still think we have to have some reference to it here.
To policy.
To the contract.
Yeah, to the contract, because then otherwise, someone could bring up something that's in the contract, and you're right, we got the circular, circular argument. If it's in here in our policy, if there's a change in that contract from, you know, three years, four years, one year, whatever, then our policy still stands. We don't have to go back and change our policy.
Okay. Yep. I mean, this policy, 5:290, makes four references to the contract. We need a policy that has four references to a contract.
That's because the contract, essentially, you're right, the language in the contract regarding these items trumps the items listed in that policy. So there was negotiations that took place, right?
Yep.
So I guess I'm trying to understand why you're finding fault in it, because what would you, what would you say instead? Would you just take this policy out?
Yes. I mean, for a final paycheck, we don't need a policy that says, "Look at the agreement." We can have one policy that says, "Look at the agreement" for everything.
But this only refers to the agreement between the Indian Prairie Classified Association and the Indian Prairie School District. What about our non-bargaining or administrative?
We have no policy on that.
For a final paycheck, you're correct. There is no policy.
Well, true. But I mean, there's also those, at least those two groups that aren't included in the agreements here that they're referencing. So are there situations where there's going to be something that doesn't apply to administration and non-bargaining groups, but does apply to Classified Association and the IPEA?
So the beginning of this policy, there's resignation and retirement. I talked about employees not covered.
Right.
That could just be our policy, and there can be on resignation or retirement, and there could be some overarching policy that says, "Look at the agreements. We have delegated our policies to an agreement."
I think it's kind of what it says, though. I don't know.
It says it four times.
So again, I want to try to get a, I'm trying to get what you're saying and what the legal people from IASB are saying. You would like this turned into one policy versus having it be inputted into several different policies. Is that the general gist of this?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't want to bring the contract language into the policy. I want to refer to the policy, but I don't need to do it all these times.
Okay, and any other response to what the legal counsel said from the outside agencies?
From me?
No, from IASB and, I don't know, who else was it?
Well, Brian is from the, Brian Zumpf is our policy consultant for Press by IASB.
So from the policy consultant. Any response to that?
Me?
Yes.
Yeah, I disagree with them. I mean...
Okay. That's okay. I guess that's as clear as I'm going to get.
So you want to add a policy to, in order to remove all these references?
Right, right. That's right.
Was there a second issue, that circular thing where you were...
That's a cleanup item, I think. If you look at Board Policy, you know, that religious leave, that's 5:70, and the collective bargaining agreement, that's something that can be cleaned up regardless of the overarching discussion.
I just, I don't know. I just, I mean, I get what you're saying, but I just feel like there's no harm in having it here. And if the average person is looking at these policies, and we don't have it listed right there and under those particular items, then there could be confusion on their part, because they didn't see, "Oh, I didn't know you were referencing this," even though we have a policy maybe 12 pages ahead of it that says, oh, everything, you know, the contracts trump everything. I just, I guess I don't see the harm in having it where, you know, where somebody might be looking at educational support personnel, especially like a new, maybe a new hire, or somebody that's maybe looking at being employed by our district, who would like to gain employment with our district, if they're looking at our policies. And obviously, they're, you know, if they're not employed, they're not going to be necessar, well, the contract's on the website, but I don't know. I don't know. I just, I don't think there's any harm in having it there.
Okay, in order for Mr. Carrubus to vote for some of, perhaps some of these policies, do you want to separate out this motion, and then we would have to remove the motion that we currently have?
Can I ask a question first?
Sure.
These policies were put on this Consent Agenda for a reason, and is there an urgency to have these passed today?
These were on, these were in the press update. You could see that we're not really talking about the changes that were in here. The changes that were in here are changes based upon changes in either the school code or other things that we should be updating as part of our policy.
My, because these, we didn't see these policies before. I mean, because I was looking back, like, where's the first reading, the second reading?
No, we, well, because we have talked about a process where if the change is minor and it's only related to a change in law, that we would go immediately to consent.
Consent Agenda. That's what I, and I thought, so I thought that also sets, there's a little urgency to getting these in there, because the laws have changed.
Okay. What we're discussing is really not part of what the press changes are.
But so if we pull them out and vote against them, we're messing that process up a bit by not approving the changes that are called for for today.
So if this was to be an item for future discussion, that would be something that you would need to request through the superintendent and president, I understand?
Yes.
If you want to have a discussion on this topic, you know, further discussion.
Right, another agenda item. That's correct. So do we want to move ahead with this motion?
Can I?
And we could also...
Or do we want to amend it?
We could also, you know, bifurcate the vote and say, you know, "These policies, we vote for these policies, and then we, on a separate vote, we vote for these two that Justin has pulled." We could do that.
And that's what I'm asking.
Yes.
So whoever made the policy will have to amend the, whoever made the motion has to amend the motions.
Or this motion would simply die.
Yes.
Or we could vote on it. Right.
Right.
There's a couple of options how to do that.
Yes, so it's now time to decide.
That is your decision.
I make a motion to approve... I make a motion to approve Board Policy 5: And I'm making another one.
You can't. We have to either, either vote on this motion and pass it or not pass it.
Or withdraw it.
Or withdraw it.
I would consider amending the motion. If somebody's asking my opinion, if the person who made the motion would like to amend it. So Ms. Price, I think you made the motion. So if you want to leave it the way it is, that's fine. If not, then we'll, if you want to amend it, that's fine.
I move to amend the approval.
No, she's, she's fine.
I'm the original.
Go ahead. Yes, you're fine. You're right.
Thank you. I move to amend my original motion. And I move to approve Board Policies 4: I moved to bifurcate the vote and approve Policies 4.15, 4:200. No. That's one you pulled, right?
5:200, yes.
Okay. Approve 7:20, 5:240.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Do we have any other discussion? Hearing none. Jackie, can you call the roll?
Well, maybe. One second. What am I voting on?
You're voting on approving the ones that you liked.
Approving all but 5200 and 5290.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Carubis?
Yes.
Ms. Demme?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Resack?
Motion passes. We now need a motion to approve Policy 5:200.
I will make a motion to approve Policy 5:200 and 5:2, 5:290.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
I'd like to actually ask the administration something. Would it be possible, and Justin, while I agree with your streamlining and wanting to be efficient with these policies, I just feel like, you know, in these areas, except for maybe the final paycheck one. But in these areas, we need to reference back to the agreements between the Classified and the Education Association. My question to administration was, do you think it would be wise for us to link to some of that language for these particular areas? Would that make it easier or they can find the contract that's readily available within, on our website? It would just make, okay.
I think that's what she was saying with.
Do you mean link, like an actual link in?
Well, you know, I mean, if there's, I mean, if we're talking about non-RIF dismissal, for instance, right, and that's, we have, there's a little policy here, but it says, please reference the, you know, the Classified Association contract. We could essentially just have a link right to that area that discusses RIF language, couldn't we?
I assume that we could, though I would want to make sure that our attorney would look at all parts of the CBA to make sure that there aren't other sections that
Yeah, that's true.
Need to be.
Because there could be multiple sections within the contract that discuss the, yeah, okay. Okay, that's, I said what I needed to say.
Any other questions?
Yes. Ms. Price, did you second that motion?
I did.
So I guess my just, my question is further clarification is, is that, and I certainly understand Justin's point about trying to be succinct and clear, but our attorneys felt that this is currently the way it stands and that reference back to our contract was, was best for these particular policy.
Not,
or the way the policy reads.
Not our attorneys that we've paid any money to, but the attorneys at IASB in the policy
Okay.
realm.
Okay.
Other questions?
So that circular reference issue, though, I think that that is something that the attorneys don't object to fixing, right?
Do you have to look at? But we'd have to make sure, though, then, that once we start doing it in one area, that we do it throughout. Wouldn't, wouldn't that be correct?
I think it's two different issues, isn't it? It's, one of them is you are trying to simplify the policy so that there aren't just all these policies that say, see the contract. And then you also had a second issue that was this going in circles referencing.
Correct.
That's kind of what I was talking about.
I think we can end that in the contract language.
So what we're going to end up doing is we're going to take, you know, we're going to change our religious holiday policy to reference the whole contract.
Well, no, because there's also code statute that has to be identified because there's certain Illinois laws. So that has to be here. Because you can't, are you going to reference the ILCS in the teacher's contract?
The ILCS stuff doesn't have to be in our policy. Doesn't have to be in the contract. It's just footnotes, right?
Yeah, I just think it puts us at risk, though, if we don't.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we want to take that out. I mean, that was, that was part of why we went to press, so we could have everything, you know, that is going by state stature and statute and I don't, I mean, again, I don't know what the harm is in keeping the legal reference in our policies. Unless I misunderstood you.
I want the legal references. I just want to, I'm ready to vote. Let's go.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I have a comment. Just when, when we do do these special ones, I think it would be nice to have a note on there that these are falling under that category, just in the comments somewhere when they're listed. Just think it would be nice to know. Especially because we didn't have a first reading and a second reading. This is going straight forward. I think that's important to just note it when it's done.
I guess it was my understanding that when we had policy changes that only have maybe a date change.
I know. I'm just saying that, to just note that that's what this is.
On the?
Yeah, on the board docs.
Okay.
I'm just saying, be nice, because I, I look, you know, there was no indication that that's what it was. Just looking at them, you had to look through them and understand that. So let's just tell us first, too.
Ms. Demme?
No, I was just.
Okay.
I do want clarification as we get ready to vote, please, of what
Sure.
What I'm voting on.
You're, you're voting to approve, you're voting to approve Policies 5:200 and 5:290 as written.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Jackie, can you call the roll?
Ms. Demme?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Mr. Resack?
Aye.
Mr. Carubis?
No.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Motion passes 6:1. We now move to our action items, which is the approval of district and curriculum instructional fees. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion for the approval of the district and curriculum and instruction fees as presented.
And do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. And with that, anything to add?
The only changes in the district fees are the $40 added on to the elementary grades two through five fee for the Chromebooks. And the workbook fees that you see are consistent across all schools and have been reviewed by all three of our high schools and all seven of our middle schools.
So that it was previously 105 and now it's 145, correct?
And so you're, I'm sorry. So the, the middle and high schools looked at the workbook fees that are listed and they're, okay.
Yes. And they're consistent across all three and all seven.
Other questions? Hearing none. Jackie, call the roll, please.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Carubis?
Yes.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Mr. Resack?
Aye.
Ms. Demme?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next action item is the approval of policies for first reading. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion for the approval of policies for first reading. 6:50 for school wellness, 1:0, or 7:180 for prevention of and response to bullying, intimidation, and harassment. And, is that it? That's it.
Okay, so we put these on for first reading because there, there's more to these. The, the school wellness policy 650 has,
Need a second really quick.
Oh, sorry.
Second.
I heard a second.
Sorry.
We have a, okay.
I'll just go.
I'm going.
School wellness. Most of the changes are federal law related to some changes in nutrition laws. That's where the majority of the changes are, though there are a few changes under physical activity with some of the changes to the Illinois Administrative Code. Mr. Carubis asked about some of the other, there's three other policies that we'll be bringing to you next meeting, which deal more with the changes that the legislature made to the policies concerning physical education. But this is, this, the school wellness policy, as you can see, is mostly about nutrition and food services. So that policy was totally rewritten, so we gave you the copy that our current policy, what it looks like, and what the rewritten policy is. Sometimes they rewrite them totally for clarity. Makes it a little bit more difficult to compare, but that's, you should have both of those. And the 7:180, which is the policy on prevention of and response to bullying, intimidation, and harassment, were required every two years to review and reevaluate this policy. This is when we are due to do that. There aren't many changes to this, just a couple things that press has recommended for clarity. But most of the rest of it policy is exactly the same, but in the spirit of being required to review and reevaluate it, we put this on for first reading.
Any comments or questions? I do have some. In the school wellness, 6:50, two things changed. One, and it just went away with it. One was the monitoring from the board. It appeared to me that the board monitored the wellness and we were presented with an update every year. This new policy says every three years. And the other thing is the community involvement. And it says periodic reviews and updates. I don't know if that was annually before.
It would have been redlined, but I don't think it was.
Maybe not. And I'm just wondering, I don't think it was. Is that sufficient for everyone? That's what I noted. Are we good with that?
The monitoring does say at least every three years, so that doesn't mean that you can't do it more frequently.
Okay.
You're concerned with periodic. What does that mean?
And if that's a concern, I suggest we probably should discuss that and put that into policy because otherwise it's leaving it up for chance, right?
I think we need to define what periodic is.
Anyone else?
What are you specifically looking at, Mike, again?
It's the bottom of page two.
Thanks.
On monitoring.
Yep.
And then after monitoring goes community involvement.
I'm okay with just periodic reviews. I think having some discretion in this area and not specific dates or timelines is sufficient. The three-year, three-year will pick it up.
Anyone else?
I'm fine with it as well. I just didn't know if you wanted the definition.
No, I'm just, I, I, that was,
That was your question, should we define it?
It's my question. That's, I don't know if I would define it as a concern, but it's a question, is that sufficient? It just, in my first reading, I get blinks, where you look at something and you kind of respond to it, and that was my response. So I'm just wondering if anybody else saw that or had concern. It appears not.
I'm optimistic that if there was an issue, that the board would bring it up for discussion. So I'm okay with periodic.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. Jackie, can you call the roll?
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Mr. Carubis?
Yes.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Resack?
Aye.
Ms. Demme?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. We now move to the discussion portion of the agenda. We have a Future Ready 204 presentation.
Is that on a line I tie?
It is not specifically, but I would not, I would not deny that if you thought.
Would you like it to be in a line I tie?
It is now.
It is now. I'm okay, I'm okay with that. Unless the basketball game gets going here in a little bit and the score gets a little offside.
Thanks, Clayton. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to share with you tonight an update on hashtag Future Ready 204. I'd like to welcome Brian Jovanini, who's our Director of elective curriculum, who's here with me representing the work of our department and with our focus on helping students to become future-ready. The purpose of tonight is an update. There is no action required. We've spoken to you before about Future Ready. And we wanted to share with you a little bit more about it this evening in relation to Board Policies 6:230 and 6:210, which really look at instruction and the use of our library and media programs. You may remember, because we've shown it to you the last three times I've sat here, this graphic of the four plans with the mission statement around it. What we're going to talk about in helping students to be future-ready really is webbed and integrated throughout all of these plans. And we've provided you with an overview, and today we want to focus a little bit more on what's coming next. So specifically related to Future Ready would be Future Ready Skills and Flexible Delivery of Instruction, which are really a focus of our Curriculum and Instruction Plan. And, but again, they are, this Future Ready is woven throughout all four plans. So this next slide, our team participated in an in-service with Lumity, which really supports students in coding instruction. And I thought that this graphic was, or this slide was a great representation of how fast things are moving and the changes that are being made. So in 1998, we told students, "Don't get in strangers' cars or meet people from the internet." And now in 2017, we summon strangers from our phone, from the internet, and get into their cars. So lots of things have changed in just a short time, and that's part of our challenge, is how do we support students so that they is how do we support students so that they are prepared for these changes, or even better, so that they can make these changes for us? So what is future ready? Uh, we look at future ready as our goal, uh, to help students to build life and work skills. Um, you've heard a lot about college and career, but we really look at life and work, um, for a lot of reasons, and we'll explain some of those as we go through, uh, through our presentation. Allison Gopnik from the University of California, um, says, move away from teaching what computers and robots can do for us. And if you think about what computers do for us now, uh, just think about when our kindergartners are in the workforce, what computers and robots will be able to do for them at that time. So our job is to really, um, help students be prepared for that. Uh, you've seen many lists of skills for the workforce. Uh, these are our, the skills that our students will need to be prepared for life and work. Uh, they, the source of this is the Future of Jobs by the World Economic Forum, and it's from two thousand sixteen. And these ten items, um, are things that have been identified to help, uh, students or any worker to be successful as they move forward. As we go through this presentation, we'll highlight, uh, these, uh, we'll jump around a little bit, but we'll highlight each of these skills and how we are addressing them as a school system and supporting our students in acquiring these skills. So one of the, um, key areas for us is computer science, and it's, um, the quote from Lumity is, "Computer science is the art of blending human ideas and digital tools to increase problem-solving power." So, uh, what we've learned is that, um, in the future, every career will have a portion of computer science built within it. So I'm not talking about every career will be a computer science career, but every career will have some form of computer science built into it. So our students are going to have to know and understand it in order to do anything that they choose. And one of the biggest visuals for me was sitting in a kindergarten classroom. Some of us had an opportunity to visit last year, and the teacher had a BeBot, and this is a B that, um, you use the arrow keys to program, and it's directional, and you can move it two steps forward, one step to the side, and, uh, she, the teacher had a mat out on the floor, and the students were programming their BeBot to share their habitat, three items from their habitat of an animal that they had researched. So one student, it was the student's turn to show the BeBot, and the student moved the numbers, I've, I mean, pressed the buttons, and one boy who was sitting across the mat from her said, that's going to go off the mat. And the teacher was like, okay, put it and put it down and try it, and for sure that this BeBot went off of the mat. So it was a great, uh, visual that that student, who was five years old, already had a lot of these thinking skills to be able to program the BeBot so much that from a distance, it could see it and decide where it was going to go. Whereas the student who was working with the BeBot probably needs a little bit more support to think in that manner, that sequential critical thinking manner. So it was a great visual to me to understand that we need to teach these skills, not, not just, um, provide opportunities for those students who already have those and they're talented in that area, but all of our students need to be able to understand and to use computer science, um, in, as we move forward. So, um, if you look at complex problem solving, critical thinking, creativity, and cognitive flexibility, one of the ways that we address the instruction of these skills is through our maker spaces. We have been, uh, very lucky that, um, our foundation, the New Superior Education Foundation, has supported us in our maker space endeavor. Uh, they provided funding so that we could put startup maker spaces in every one of our elementary schools. They've expanded to some, uh, middle school and even at the high school, we've expanded these spaces. And what they, what a maker space kit, um, involves is, are things like the BeBots and an Osmo and things that a student can program and code, as well as Legos and, um, building materials. At our preschool, they use just, uh, paper towel, um, just the tube that comes from a paper towel and things like that. It's just an area where students can, uh, create things, um, can code, can, uh, we can provide them with problems. They can work together to solve them through some of these tools. And so, um, it's really been a great endeavor for us and a great start, um, to look at some coding opportunities, to have students create solutions to problems, to have them persist through reflection and revising. So the student who programmed the bot said, oh, that didn't work. Let me think about what I needed to do differently, and let's try it again, and persist until it worked and made it to the habitat. And then it also supports sequential and critical thinking, which are skills we know our students are going to need. Our focus, uh, is on the elementary, and we want to take some of those maker space ideas, the coding, uh, the creativity from the LMC and move it into the classroom. And how do we use that to help our students become better readers, better mathematicians, uh, better scientists? And so that will be something that you'll see in the future.
Is this okay if I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So when I saw that, I just want to clarify though, we are, we are not looking to supplant the maker spaces out of the LMC. We're looking to supplement in, into the classrooms as well.
We're looking to extend what's in the LMC into the classroom, just as we do with other resources that are in our libraries.
Just making sure, because I think there's some huge benefits of having it in the LMC.
Oh, absolutely.
For different, you know, collaboration teams and everything else, so.
Any other questions about those four skills? I know you all want to get after the spot, well, we'll do that after.
So Cathy had an opportunity to really talk about kind of where we are at the elementary school level. I wanted to explain a little bit at the middle school and high school level, kind of what that computer science sequence looks like. To kind of highlight some of the things that Cathy already mentioned, those, these computer science, it's shot, it's not just programming. It's not just learning to use the applications or Photoshop course, but those are the parts of it. But you're really going to see problem solving, collaboration, testing, refining, and communications as the backbone of the course. So if you kind of look up the, in that PowerPoint here, at sixth grade and essential tech and creative tech, right off the bat, they're starting with the problem solving unit to get the backbone of computer science and drives the rest of the course. From the computer science framework in those courses, you're also going to see some data analysis, as well as some programming, specifically through block languaging. And then as you get through the, uh, to the eighth grade level, you're going to start to see some more, uh, specific programming that in different applications and web and app development. And then if you look at the Project Lead the Way sequence starting in middle school, you'll see some robotics programming, some mechanical engineering that also extends out into the high school. Where you're going to see the Project Lead the Way Principles of Engineering. And then also in digital electronics at the high school level, some computing through, uh, electronics and the computing side of circuits. And you're also going to look at the Project Lead the Way EDD capstone course, depending on what a student chooses as their self-discovery project. There could be a lot of computer science built into it, or the, the computer science framework could just be the backbone of the course based on what they're doing and kind of connection to what Cathy said, computer sciences and going to be in every field as you move forward, just like in every EDD project. Other elective opportunities, um, in the coding semester class, JavaScript, introduction to that programming language. Uh, web design, using the design thinking and HTML to the course. Emerging tech, allowing students to build some app development in addition to other things. And then you're also going to see two advanced placement courses, one, Computer Science Principles, coming next year. That is not a programming language specific, but really looking at computer science framework as a whole and assessing kids on that. And then our traditional AP Computer Science A, which we've had, uh, for a couple of years in high school, and using a Java-based programming language for that course.
Which, which one of these were additional offerings or are these current offerings?
These are all current offerings, middle through high school. AP Computer Science Principles A is the one that was adopted in September, correct, and is starting next year at the high school level. Sorry, Principal, sorry.
Have we looked at, because I, I've seen Project Lead the Way at conferences or at the school work. And I know they have middle school offerings. I know they have much more high school offerings too. Did we look at some of that as well? Or are we happy with what we have right now with, that aligns with our other curriculum offerings?
So Project Lead the Way does a, has a very extensive offering. We have the Project Lead the Way Engineering Strand and Sequence. Uh, if you look at their other offerings, uh, the other offerings are similar to what we already provide in our high schools. So if you look at the computer science, one of their computer science classes prepare, prepares students for the AP Computer Science Principles exam. One of them prepares Computer Science, uh, Science A, uh, Sequence. They also have a Science Strand as well, and very similar to some of the offerings that we offer. A little bit different here and there, uh, but pretty similar to the offerings that we have really.
What about the health strand? Isn't there a health?
Uh, yes, the biomechanical side of it, is that what you're looking at? That might be the one that's a little bit different, as well, a little bit of the computer software engineering. Slightly different than what we offer, but a little aligned.
So are there any plans to maybe offer that in the future, or are we sticking with, you know, what works for us right now with the engineering?
Well, I think, you know, there's, we're always looking, and we're always developing based on what student needs are and student motivation. Um, and, um, you know, just how to keep them moving forward. So I wouldn't say we're not. I would say we are happy with what we offer now, and we'll continue to visit it and make sure that we're providing students with what they need. We're excited about offering the Advanced Placement Computer Science Principles next year. I think that's going to be a good addition for students.
So in the middle school and high school, I guess, with the elect, their electives.
Yes.
So how many students participate in these electives? Like, what's the percentage of, if you have a middle school of a thousand, how many students are participating at least in one of these classes? Because old Steve Jobs next there says, everyone in this country needs to know how to do this.
I don't have, go ahead.
Go ahead. I, I don't think we have the numbers. Remember at the middle school that, um, the electives, as you remember, um, you know, if you're in a music elective, then this probably isn't a route that you can take, um, and those kinds of things. I don't think, I have the numbers, you probably.
Not up top.
Yeah, uh, but we could certainly provide that for you.
As a student that was, had, did music and took the engineering strand, it is possible. I just want our students to know that because, because of ELO. So, um, you know, it was tough, but it is doable, and there's actually a lot of music kids who go that route of engineering, so.
Yeah, I, I loved, um, your description of that BeBot thing because you were kind of tricking kids into programming without knowing that they were doing it. And, uh, do you have anything in the middle school that is along those same lines? Because I think sometimes kids get turned off or they don't think they can do it, or, or it's nerdy, or maybe it's not so nerdy these days, but.
We have, um, we have maker spaces in our middle schools, um, in the, um, library and media centers. They don't, they're similar to a BeBot, but not a BeBot. They're more mature, um, and require some different types of programming, and I don't know if you want to talk a little bit?
And as you get onto the computer-based side of programming, computer science, you're going to start with some of the block-based programming, so it's not all the lines of code that may be scary at first. It's going to be more game-based and more computer, or cartoony-based to kind of engage your kids. They're not necessarily thinking that they're computer science or programming all the time, so it is kind of scaffold along the way. When you get to AP Computer Science A, you're going to be like writing some lines of code and really looking at Java. That's really at the high school level specifically.
So maybe you need, help me project the future. When I went to school in prehistoric days, it was reading, writing, and arithmetic. Is coding one of those essential skills that are going to be needed? And what are we going to do to adjust our curricular paradigm?
Well, that's why we're here this evening.
To make this occur, huh?
That's why we're here. Um, you know, our.
But you're also tell, uh, not to argue with you here, but you're telling me, I, I would really want to know how many students are participating in this to make sure that we're, you know, meeting, meeting that need.
Well, and I think, um, one of the things that we found is it doesn't have to be the structured. And when we start with kindergarten and some of these maker spaces, we have kids who come in who have already done coding. They're a scratch junior and things like that that they can do at any time. But our goal is to figure out what that strand is that moves K through, through twelve. There's a nice strand that we have through middle school and high school, but there are other opportunities. And one of the ways to, to figure this out is to look at how does coding fit within math? When you think about sequential thinking, a lot of times you think about math, you think about science. So that's the work that we're doing with teachers, you know, as you heard from our professional learning, uh, presentation before, that's one of the reasons why our team is going out to buildings and working with teachers, because that's a great opportunity to see how teachers are thinking about integrating this and where they see it fit into their regular curriculum. Because that's going to be the key piece for us, is figuring out how it supports reading, math, science, and social studies as moving forward.
Yeah, I mean, I'm a computer engineer, so obviously quite passionate about this and totally believe in it. And that's where I think that you got to make this part of these courses and not a special path that they go down. And the more you can do that, the more, uh, future ready that these kids are going to be.
And who better to help us than the teachers who are in front of kids? And to be honest with you, the students show us a great deal. Some of the things we've never thought of with a BeBot, students have just done, and, oh, yeah, we could do that. And, uh, so we're really finding that that's been a great path for us to, to help figure out how to integrate it within.
You helped me.
I, for, I, I just, just reiterating, um, what Lori said, for those students especially who don't think this is an area that they can do or that is relevant for them, but just the fact, the reiteration that this is going to be critical regardless of the area that you decide to go into. So the more that we can, uh, be cognizant about those initiatives that help us integrate and, I hate to say trick students, but, but, um, just incorporating it in so many different facets of our educational stream would, will be so valuable. So, um, I just say continue to look for those opportunities where, for, for those students who aren't engineering-bound, um, if you will.
Well, that's one of the reasons why we're so thrilled with our kindergarten teachers and our primary teachers, uh, really looking at this, because this is fun, and students don't even realize what they're learning from pushing the buttons and seeing where it goes and, um, making adjustments, so. And to be honest with you, the education field and even the toy field has really come a long way. There's a caterpillar you can buy, um, they call it Coda pillar, uh, that you can get for a three to four-year-old that codes a, a caterpillar to move across the floor based on how you align the parts of it. So, um, it's a goal for everyone, and we're lucky that, um, companies have been, um, recognizing that same thing and moving things forward for, helping support it.
To kind of extend off a little bit on the preparing students for life and work, that computer science and computing dynamic kind of hits these next three skills as well. Because of the ability of data analysis and the data that's available to you at a moment's notice, these three coordinate with others, your judgment, decisions, and negotiation really plays an impact on all that. And some of the things that we as a district continue to do is planning projects with others, not only the student side, but as well the teacher's side. So teachers, admin, community, really working together to create authentic learning experiences for kids, whether it's computer science or any other field of study, creating those experiences that the students can partake in. And then we're looking at evaluate and seeking and going deeper to what we provide our students. To give you an example, last summer, uh, we allowed teachers to pick one of five books, and one of those books was called Launch. The Launch Cycle used design thinking as the backbone, okay? And so a part of that process, the L-A-U-N-C-H all stands for a process that a student goes through to dive deeper into what they're trying to learn. The L, look, look, observe, and listen, really take a dive into that. And for an example, a Project Lead the Way classroom does a penguin-shaped ice cube, uh, project, where what they're doing is students test available building materials and then design and build a dwelling that'll keep a penguin-shaped ice cube from melting. So during that project, what they're doing is going through the observational process, asking questions, then understanding the process to go deeper, and then ultimately brainstorming into navigating ideas before they build a prototype, and then pitch it to an authentic audience. So that entire launch design process is going through that. And through that process, they're really having to make judgments, decisions, work with group mother, group, group members, and go through that entire process, which kind of extends to the last one, the cooperative group work, where all those projects are guided by clear objectives, allow students to work in small groups, kind of share their strengths and develop interpersonal skills that they have with their team members. So the next three skills, you hear future ready two oh four a lot, and we just talked about computer science. And you're going to hear a lot of innovation, creation, development. But as a district, we have not forgot about the important things of dealing with people and people management and emotions and empathy. So that's an important thing that we want to make sure that we highlighted today. And some of those examples that we've seen, if you look at our service projects across the district, at the LA level, at the elementary school level, providing service projects a part of the curriculum. If you just look in the newspaper from this week, what Mattia Valley did on Martin Luther King Day and supporting the community. King Day and supporting the community. When Hurricane Irma came through, some of the things that local elementary schools and middle schools did to support all those students. So service projects are a big part of what we do, and we're still concerned about the individual people and not this individual. In addition, really look into social emotional standards across the state, developing self-awareness, self-management skills, using social awareness to make positive relationships, and then demonstrating those decision-making skills in personal school and community contexts. And you'll see that across all three levels, whether at the high school and advisory periods, middle school and advisory periods, or through just support of the offerings that we have at the middle school, elementary, and high school level, and our social workers, psychologists and counselors, as well as some of the partnerships we have with U360 and other resources available. So we talked about 10 key skills of the world forum really highlighted, but what do we do to highlight all those 10 skills is something that we want to kind of dive into a little bit. So in the student engagement part of it, we talked about those offerings that we offer at the middle school and high school level for kids, in addition to the AP course offerings in every academic area. We also use student interest and inquiry to really drive our science and social studies instruction. Extracurricular opportunities are available in STEM, arts, CTE, any passion that a student has, there's really an opportunity available for them to go deeper into it. And then also providing flexible learning spaces and delivery of instruction, which allows students to choose how, where, and when they learn best, and allowing them to make the best choice for them individually. So if you look at the high school course guide, you're going to see online courses through ELO, blended courses available, continuing to develop for next year up to 10, and then some traditional classes as well in our traditional setting. And then as we continue on that whole path and providing experiences for kids, if you look back to that Launch example, the last part was providing an authentic experience for kids and pitching it to authentic audiences. And these are just a few examples, some up here and some that I'm going to talk about here, they are not the only examples. But just to give you a little taste of what's available for students today, high school advertising students, working with local organization to create an ad campaign, Project Lead the Way Civil Engineering and Architecture students sharing designs for Habitat for Humanity Home to local builders, and the builders giving feedback to individual students based on that design. A catering class delivering meals to the Ronald McDonald House in Chicago, also a great connection to service project. Child development class, creating hypothetical courses for a local park district based on the development of age of a child, so what you would see in your local park district, our child development classes developing some scenarios. Internships for students, whether it's during the school year or during the summer, as well as some job shadow opportunities. And then also Technology Center of DuPage, which allows students to go there for half a day and really dive deeper into career cluster of interest to them. And three of our most popular, Cosmetology, Fire Science, and Criminal Justice.
So what are the challenges? You've heard where we want to go and how, what we want to provide for our students and the skills that they need. Our challenges are really meeting the changing needs of our students. We know what the, we feel like we understand the needs of our students today, but we know that that's ever-changing. And so keeping up with what they need to know and how do we deliver that so that, to support them? Because we can't predict the careers of the future, and some of the experts are telling us that some of our students who are in elementary school today will have seven careers by the time that they retire from the workforce, seven different careers. So it's very hard to predict what those careers will be, because most of them haven't even been developed yet. So what kinds of things can we do? And our interest is in looking and investigating an elementary career awareness program to help students understand that success in careers is based on strengths as well as interest, and looking at things that you're passionate about and the strengths that you have that match that. We want to expand the use and the events of our college and career days. Many of our schools have college days, some have career days. We want to expand that, those opportunities for students to gain an understanding of what it means to go to college and what it means to have a career. And then continue to develop partnerships with businesses. Brian highlighted a few for the authentic learning experiences, but we found some great success with local businesses coming into our schools and meeting with students, some field trips that go outside of our schools. And most recently with the Project Smile grant, we've had some teachers actually do professional development at local businesses. So at Ball Seed, they actually got to work with seeds and learn themselves. So we want to continue to develop those partnerships and with our local businesses to support our students. And then one of the last areas is innovation labs. An innovation lab is a space that is designated for that creativity, that collaboration, that critical thinking. It can, has a variety of resources set up for students to explore, create, problem-solve, and work together in order to innovate and to create something new. So when we talked about at the beginning about Uber and how we told students not to get in, somebody started by thinking, "Hey, wouldn't it be nice if I could get a car to come pick me up at a place?" We hope that some of these innovation labs that we can create, we can promote some of that thinking, some of that problem-solving of how to make the world better and how to make things better. So we'd like to continue to investigate and look at developing some innovation labs. And then our ultimate goal, obviously, is to prepare students for whatever they choose. That's why we include life as well as work, because we know a well-balanced person is a, is a happy person and someone who can be very successful. So, they may have seven careers. We want to be able to provide them as many skills as we can before they leave us so they can be successful in all of them. And we'd like to thank you for your time and your interest. Did you have any other questions for us?
Do you have any innovation labs started at all? Or those aren't created yet, these are things for the future?
Not specifically. So within some of our courses, it allows for a lot of that innovation and specific personalized interests for a student at middle school and high school. So, just for EDD is a great example, VEI, media classes, giving a lot of opportunity for kids to kind of explore self-passion and create that innovation, and a lot of resources available to them. It's not a separate space. The LMC has a lot of those things built in there as well. Same thing goes at the middle school level as well.
We'd like to create that space.
Right.
So that it's readily available and can be used by a teacher, by a group of students, by one student who wants to explore.
How many of our classes are online?
I can't think off the top of my head. I think every academic area has at least one off the top of my head, and then a handful have two or three. So CTE, there's three or four, I think. Math has geometry, science has one, I think LA has one.
Psychology.
So roughly 10, I would say.
We run probably 10 or 12 at any one time. There are other offerings that we don't necessarily get participation to run courses, but we run probably 10 or 12. Our most popular time of year is in the summer.
Eric and government.
Very popular.
I'm sorry, go ahead. Partnerships, partnerships with businesses, extremely interested in that arena. Are we seeing those partnerships across all levels or only at the high school level?
It's the easiest, the high school level, because it's a direct connection. But I think a lot of businesses really want to partner with a lot of other ways. I know there's some examples of partnerships that come in at the elementary school level all the time. The high school level has some advisory boards where there's a direct connection to it. And I don't want to speak too much elementary school, but.
We just had, for instance, you know, some of our teachers participated in that professional learning where they went to Ball Seed and they did some learning over the summer. And then before the winter break, Ball Seed came into three of our elementary schools and did some of a professional, or just a workshop with students that looked at the growth of seeds, but in a different manner than what we've taught before. It wasn't the parts of a plant, it was more about dig your hands in, figure this out, this is what I do. This is, as a scientist at Ball Seed, this is what I get to do every day. I try to make different plants and things like that. So more of a career orientation and then some hands-on activities that go along with it, which was very popular with our students. And so those are some of the things we'd like to extend.
What about the teachers, our teachers that are at the STEM school? Have they, how many of them have come back or have they been able to, what?
We've had one come back and then we have a possibility of two coming back at the end of the school.
Okay. And have they been able to, or have you learned anything from, you know, what they're teaching and what they're learning over there that has been integrated into our classrooms here?
Right. Their instruction, the integrated instruction model, they have brought back, and in fact, for our institute day at elementary, one of, a group of teachers from the STEM school, but including one that is a 204 teacher, is going to share how they plan and how they work to do that integrated model to, as a problem-solving type of activity that they do at the STEM school. We've also, the STEM school is also, as far as partnerships go, has extended out to our district as well. And so we can go to their partnership meetings where they plan units together. And we've done some extension to where our students, as well as students at the STEM school, communicate through, you know, a webinar or Skype with a scientist together and have done some of those kinds of things. So we've started to learn from some of the activities that they've done, as well as how they plan and how they integrate things together, as well as partner, building off their partnerships.
Thank you.
I had a question about, you know, you have so many hands-on and we, I mean, I went to the course catalog and there's a zillion different courses, maybe not a zillion, but a lot. What about the trades and that? Do we offer enough in those areas and especially like internships and those experiences for kids to explore that?
Yes, so every kind of pathway, career cluster, has an opportunity for a kid to engage with it for a course. And then if there is not a pathway specifically designed for it, Technology Center of DuPage has that offering for a student as well to really dive into that as well. And that offering can give them dual credit opportunities, a lot of sense, and then also some credentials in some courses as well.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Last item for discussion is Board of Education update. I really don't have a report beyond that. There will be a lun meeting scheduled for Friday. It will probably be interesting, given Governor Honner's veto of the evidence-based funding system. And so we probably won't know what our funding under that model will be for a period of time. So I'll be interested to see what types of advocacy the districts are proposing in order to make that occur sooner than later. Anyone else? Oh, community engagement.
Yes. Community engagement happens on the, this coming Monday at Still Middle School, 7:00 PM, 7 to 9. So we, it's always asked for as many of our community constituents to come out, not only those constituents with, those community partners with children, but business partners as well as community members. So it's vital, critical, and we really want to hear your input, have your input. So please consider joining us on Monday, the 29th, Still Middle School, 7:00 PM. That's our third series. Yes. So we're kind of right in the middle of it. Right, exactly the middle.
And the topic is academics.
Thank you, President.
And I think we're going to be talking about what academics looks like now, but also what it might look like in the future. It's kind of going to be an offset of some of the things we heard today. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Favor?
Aye.
Can I like log in right away, right now? Or do I have to be at home to do?